Well, good morning, everybody. Welcome. Staff meeting Tuesday, August 20. Good to see everyone. Mr. Tom Stoltz, take it away.
We have three topics and we're going to go in order of we're going to discuss the Northeast Cedric County Park status. Tanya has that presentation and Justin will help with that. Then Mr. Kelly Dixon is here from M A B C D to give us the update on the newest floodplain map changes. And then we'll talk just a little bit at the end and Tanya will cover this as well with me on KAC soliciting items for their agenda, just to see if the commission has any interest in adding any of what we know is going to be on our platform going forward. So we'll discuss that briefly at the end while we have you all here together because there's a pretty short timeline on that. So take it away, Tanya.
All right. Good morning, Chairman Commissioners. Justin and I will be talking this morning about Northeast Cedric County Park, and it has been several years since we've talked about the park. So this morning will mostly be informational, but I do have an interest as we talk about the park because we have submitted a decision package on a master plan for our parks. And so as we kind of discuss that, I would like you to just kind of keep in mind as to whether or not you want Northeast Cedric County Park as part of that master plan discussion in that decision package. So. Okay, this map is just a map of the three Cedric County parks that we do have. In the top right there, you'll see Northeast Cedric County Park. Then in the middle is Cedric County Park that sees about a million visitors each year. And then towards the bottom there is Lake Afton Park that sees about 500,000 visitors each year. Northeast Cedric County Park has approximately, or excuse me, has seven parcels and within those parcels contains 646 acres. And you can see the breakdown of those parcels there and how many acres are contained within those parcels. To the north, there are the six parcels that's just north of 77th Street South. And then on the south there of 77th Street, there is that one parcel which contains the largest.
Tanya, are every one of those encumbered or just are some of those not encumbered?
I believe all of those are encumbered. We obtained this park from the city in 2011 as part of the settlement from the jails fees litigation between this county and the city. Originally, those parcels were planned to become a landfill. And right now, a portion of the park has horse trails and a small parking area, and you'll see that in the next few slides. But the park is mostly undeveloped and there are not any buildings on those parcels.
I thought there was one maintenance building out there.
Do we have a maintenance building out there, Aaron?
Yes, there is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One old shed where we keep a couple of.
Okay, I apologize. There is one shed. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, and then that's the parking area. Okay, Justin.
All right, Commissioners, I'm going to speak a little bit about Commissioner Dennis already asked about the encumbrance that applies. That does apply to all the land out there. Commissioner Dennis, Tanya was correct on that. The, and this is the encumbrance that applies to federal law. It's called the Land and Water Conservation Fund Act. And generally speaking, that law's been around for a handful of decades, but it's for the acquisition and development of park lands. It's a federal law and that's really the only known restriction that we have on this Northeast Cedric County Park property. It requires that any property that's acquired with the funds has to be used for public outdoor recreation purposes. This is administered by, at the federal level, the U.S. Department of the Interior. And then at the state level, it's also administered by the Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks. The county, and one of the things to know is, you know, Commissioner Dennis mentioned an encumbrance. The county can't just outright sell this property. We can't just put it on the market today and do that. If we did that, the federal government will come in and stop us, I'm sure. Because there is an encumbrance, there's a process that we have to go through that I'll get to in more detail if we wanted to lift that encumbrance. The same provisions apply to the other parks that Tanya mentioned. Also, the Cedric County Zoo is subject to these, the same encumbrance because money was used under the L W C F Act to acquire that property as well. One of the questions really is why does this act apply to this property? Tanya had talked about how we acquired it. It was really a series of conversions, and that's the term of art that's used under federal law to transfer the encumbrance from one piece of property to another. All of Cedric County Park was, was subject to an encumbrance back in 1991. We carved out 13 and a half acres at 21st and Ridge to build the K-State Extension Center. And that because it was not used and is not used for public outdoor recreation purposes. And we, we transferred that encumbrance to about 40, a little bit more than 40 acres of land that the county owned at the Kansas Coliseum Camper Park, later renamed the Weedeman Park. When the county sold the Kansas Coliseum and the adjacent land in 2011, we converted that encumbrance to the roughly 646 acres out of Northeast Cedric County Park. So that's why there is an encumbrance now on that land. The Board of County Commissioners in 2017 adopted a resolution to request the federal government to lift these encumbrances out of Northeast Cedric County Park. There was a bill proposed, I believe it was by Representative Estes, but it did not get any traction federally. So there's not currently any federal legislation to remove that. But there was an attempt to at least move in that direction. I think it was in 2017 or 18, if I remember correctly. At this point, and this, I'd point out this, these aren't the exhaustive options that can be in place, but these are probably three of the more common things that the county could do with this. We continue it being operated as the Northeast Cedric County Park. Another option would be to utilize it for other public outdoor recreation uses. I'll talk about what other options there might be here in a little bit. Or we could look to convert all or a portion of Northeast Cedric County Park's encumbrance to other property through a conversion process. And you can do, you can do that with part of the property. Wouldn't necessarily have to be with all of it if that would be up to the will of the board. That process, let me back up. Well, let me, let me explain the encumbrance process. Any of the, the other property would have to be, and I'll talk about this in a little bit more detail, but the land would have to be a reasonably equivalent usefulness or value for a park use. And so that usually involves getting appraisals, seeing if it's similar value. Also has to meet the state's park, State of Kansas Park Plan and needs to be consistent with that. And there's a review process where the U.S. Secretary of Interior has to sign off on that. And they also delegate some of that review process to the state agency, in this case, the Department of Wildlife and Parks to review that. So there would be a process that we'd have to go through in order to gain approval on that. It is fairly detailed.
Question, is it acre per acre in exchange or is it value for value?
It's value for value. It's both value and usefulness. So that's why you saw presumably, I mean, I wasn't working here back when the county did the prior conversions, but you know, I assumed the location at 21st and Ridge per acre is more valuable than the land along 135. And that land was probably more valuable where the Northeast Cedric County Park. So that's probably why you saw some of the acreage increase. But it is certain, and it's worth pointing out, I mentioned the 40 acres at Weedeman Park. I think it, I think we already had an encumbrance on about 30 or 40 other acres. So all told, I think it was about 80 acres in total. So it was a little bit more than 40 that we traded for the 646. That's a good question, Chairman. So those are some of the options. A few years back, I'd reached out to the state and just these lists of potential uses are the lists that they provided. So I'm just going to go through this quickly, but these are the kinds of things that they've commonly approved for use under this funding. Not going to read them all out, but obviously these are things that have been approved around the state. And I, I haven't followed back up with the state. I did that a few years ago, but I think these are pretty commonly accepted things nationwide for this kind of use. I already talked about the conversion process and about how it has to be approved. And who makes that decision? Again, there's the ultimate approval is the Secretary of the Interior. With that, I'll hand it back over to Tanya.
Justin, on, he went through them pretty quick. There is no room in any of these parks, Cedric County Park, Afton, Northeast Park, that any restaurant, business, commerce of any sort that supports those kinds of activities is allowed under that?
There, well, I think that they're, they sometimes will allow that is my understanding and my communications with the state before, but it shouldn't be exclusively for a commerce-based reason. A good example would be, I think, for example, at the zoo, there's like a restaurant, but it needs to be supplemental is my understanding. If it's a predominant use, I think they're probably not going to allow it.
Okay, so just went through that, the slides. Really quick, just our last slide and even kind of bounce, Justin might have kind of bounced together on this. But our, our presentation today is just to kind of start the discussion again on Northeast Cedric County Park. And I kind of alluded to what my interest is on the decision package that I presented in budget. And that is whether or not you would like Northeast Cedric County Park to be part of considerations. Again, there's 650 acres at Northeast Cedric County Park that is mostly undeveloped property. There are some horse trails out there. Just this June, we did do, we updated our property appraisal of that area. So that is updated. Again, he talked about the federal restrictions that apply. Again, the area can be used in a variety of ways. Sorry, my mic.
And many options and potential uses exist that he spoke to. If you want to do anything further, I think what we would want to do is get ahold of our on-call real estate broker. I think there's a couple of ways we could go about this. He could do a search for compatible properties and see what's out there. Or we could potentially do an RFP and, you know, similar to what we did on the mental health property, you know, just ask, you know, here's the parameters that we're looking for through an RFP process. So.
So this is unique out there and I'm kind of, kind of knee deep in trying to work on this. And I think for your master plan, I would be supportive to not have to have this park in the master plan. Because I think our goal is to, this has got potentially some value that maybe we can work out with, like you said, end up swapping some land that could transfer and then it becomes valuable to sell or develop. There's a couple of other things that are kind of in the works. And so I think a master plan for Lake Afton and Cedric County Park is wise. And I don't think it needs to be encompassed into, into this then. So that's just my feelings.
Very good. And the private sector, can we, can we work with the private sector to have them develop opportunities out here?
I'll, I'll go with that. Commissioner Howe, I think, I think that's an opportunity if we would go out to the RFP. I mean, ultimately, the land would need to be in public ownership and the same strings would apply that apply now that under the encumbrance that be used for public outdoor recreation purposes, but there may be opportunities there.
Well, I'll just tell you, there's two ideas that have been floated before. One of those, I think there's some areas that are fairly wooded. Part of this property has a lot of, you know, opportunities for potential trails and things like that. I think the nearest bicycle, I use one, mountain bike type bicycle trail park to here that I'm aware of is in, is in Santa Fe Lake by Augusta. And those folks have said they would be willing to take on developing trails and they would, they would do the work. They just need permission to do it. So if we allow them to do that, and I don't know what legally, what we'd have to do to make sure that we don't get sued, but having access to, having access to that property and developing trails, they would, they would like to have that opportunity. Secondly, the second thing is, we did, some of us went out to Alvarado Lake not too long ago, and Butler County has a public shooting range. Very nice. And I believe it's fee funded. So the question is, can we get to a fee-funded shooting range here for outdoor? You talk about firearms training. We need a place to do that. That doesn't cost huge amount of money. People should be proficient. They want to have those types of things in their home or use those things. They ought to have a way to do that. And right now, there's only not a great option. There's no, there's no great options for outdoor shooting ranges that are available to the public in Cedric County. So I like the idea of a fee-funded shooting range, but again, I can see someone who would be a, a probably a for-profit company who would invest to, to run that like a business on, on that property. So I'd like to see that as an option for us to open this up to a private sector-operated government landed shooting range.
And Commissioner Howe, if I may, just expanding on what I said before, and we have had communications with the state that is permissible for private entities to be involved as long as it's open to the public and it's for outdoor recreation purposes. There is some flexibility on their, on their end and approving those types of things. And I think both the uses you mentioned are in this listing on the slideshow.
If I can clarify that, what you just said, so these encumbered properties can be used for private commerce, for-profit commerce?
Well, it can be for profit. That's not the distinguishing part that what they really focus on is that if it's, I mean, a good example would be we have these with currently with facilities out at the Cedric County Park with, you know. Yes, and, and those are, whether they're for profit or not-for-profit, it's not the distinction as far as they're concerned, but they need to be available for public outdoor recreation. And so they have teams that play and people can participate in that. But if, if it was not allowed for public outdoor recreation, for example, if they started operating something solely within a building, they're probably not going to allow that. And there are requirements that when you develop these properties and modify them, that you get state approval on that. And I would imagine some of those types of uses would run into problems, but I hope that helps your question.
Yes, yeah, I'm trying to think. Use of Northeast Cedric County Park as development or as trade to enhance something else that we have, that I think those are the two options.
And I think, I think, and I think Tanya kind of talked about this in location is it's fairly far removed from population centers in Cedric County and perhaps some of the utilities, I believe, as well as been some of the discussion in terms of roads and other, other resources.
Thank you.
I agree with Commissioner Mike. And I think right now, remove that from the master plan. Because I think there are some other things that we could do with that property that don't really fit into a park's master plan.
Sure. I guess along that, again, along the previous questions I had earlier. It's a self-imposed rule that we created that there's no motorized vehicles and hours. That's stuff we've established as policy by the county. If someone or someone wanted to turn this into a, an RV park or a camping site, for example, and have a place to do bonfires and Girl Scouts would camp out there. I mean, can this not be developed for different types of uses? And there's not any water on this property, I understand, but can they do camping?
Yeah, Commissioner Howe, I think all those restrictions you mentioned, I think you're correct that any restrictions we have on this property would be by county code. And so they could be amended by the Board of County Commissioners. I'm struggling. And I looked at Tanya, if there's any other restrictions, I'm not thinking of.
I think there's no fishing out there.
Okay, Tanya had mentioned no fishing out there.
Is there any water in the property?
I think there's a little bit of water out there, but.
As far as I'm aware, Commissioner, the, the restrictions that are out there are generally county imposed and probably could be amended by the board if that would be the will.
So how long have we had this property under our, we say 2011, right? So it's been 13 years. This is probably the fourth or fifth time I've talked about this as a staff meeting type environment. They never seem to move forward. And curiously, was before 2011, when, when did Wichita have the plan of turning this into a landfill? When did that plan start? They acquired land for that purpose.
Susan Erlin-Wine is here, Commissioner Howe. She might be able to speak to that.
While she's coming up, how is this property currently zoned? While she's coming up, how is this property currently zoned?
I would need to double check that, Commissioner Howe. I know it has distinct zoning from just rural residential, but I can't remember off the top of my head. I can, we can get that to you and the other commissioners.
We can research that. That Andrew's probably looking.
This was about 1996, 97 time period when the city purchased the land to build a landfill.
Curiously, there's houses around this area. When, we need to, I'd like to know when those houses were constructed relevant to that date. Were they, their houses there before that date or after? Because again, I know some people may not like us doing anything out there because it's going to upset their neighborhood, so to speak. But if they bought, they constructed homes knowing this was going to be a landfill, knowing this is owned by the government, I mean, that removes concerns that I might have. You know, even like the shooting range might make some noise and stuff, and I may not appreciate the number of people out there, especially the noise. But having some history of, you know, knowing this was going to be a landfill, if the houses were constructed after that date, surely they would know there's potentially anything that happened on that property, including a landfill.
We toured that area back then and I'd say 90% of the houses that are out there now with pre-existing.
They were pre-existing. Well, yes, it's my, it's my thought. Unless we think we're going to switch this, I know someone talked about potentially trading this out for some other piece of property potentially. But I think that, I don't know how likely that is, but also I just, I'll advocate with Commissioner Lopez potentially that this is going back to the north side of the county. I think it should be something on the south side of the county. If we're going to trade properties, we should be looking in that direction. But if not, I think there should be an effort to move forward. We need to have an advisory committee surround, you know, to create some ideas for this park or, I'm not sure what we need to do there, but it seems like we're just stagnant for 13 years. We've been sitting here doing nothing and we talked about it half dozen times.
So is the decision you're needing and when do you need a decision about including this into a master plan?
I don't think it has to be right away because that won't go into effect until January if we do a decision package. So I mean, not anytime soon, but it, it will certainly help.
You've given the options of what our options are and okay.
Could I add one?
Please.
I was involved in the transfer from the Coliseum area to this property. And the head of the Wildlife and Parks at that time said, the whole reason we have these rules is to stop the transfer like you guys are doing. You already moved it from the south to the north now to the northeast. And I doubt if we'll ever prove it again, but it could have changed since then. I just thought I'd add that information because we had to take her on a tour of the old property and the new property to show what we were exchanging. And she made that comment.
With context.
Let me just throw out the one more thing. Some of these ideas are very low cost. I mean, it might just require some fencing or some permission to do certain things or give it to the private sector to develop some ideas. I'm not, I don't want to use a lot of taxpayer money here, but to let that sit there not be utilized, it means a lost opportunity for quality of life in Cedric County. At the end of the day, some of these ideas are going to be very low money. And I think what we have to do is simply work with private sector, let them invest, let them operate, let them come up with the best ideas. We used to let that, let it happen. And right now, we've, we've been sitting on this thing. I think with the idea, we're not going to, we're not going to stay, we're not going to stay with this property. I think that's been the underlying problem with why we haven't gone forward is we, we thought this isn't the best place, best place to own property. But if that's not going to happen, then I don't know why we, you're looking at the different parcels there. You can have four, five or six different things out there. Quality of life and, and I know that costs a lot of money necessarily.
And Chairman, if I could, I did want to add, and looking on, online quickly, also Lynn Packer and Andrew Dilts had helped some. It looks like some of the land may be rural residential and some of it's SF5 or single-family five. I, I do recall that coming up before several years back when we were looking at what SF5 property there is in the incorporated area and thinking it was strange that this property was, but I think the city had rezoned it probably when they owned it is my prediction on that.
Mr. Mike.
Yeah, thank you. Respectful of the conversation. I, I think an RFP eventually could be support. I mean, just to come one, come all for all kinds of even potentially using some of the dirt for stuff, things like that. But there is, I, I would like with the, with you guys blessing to try to exhaust the couple of opportunities that, that may be presentable to us that, that I'm kind of working on. And if, if we could let, I think between now and definitely before the end of the year, before the master plan, we would know if these, if these opportunities could have, have enough legs to, for us to actually consider them as a, as an option. And I could work on those and then, and then I think, I think I agree with Commissioner Howe and others about then maybe we just do an RFP for come one, come all and see what, see what happens. If we can't, if, if I'm not successful or we, we are not successful in even in agreement on potentially a couple of these other options that are out there.
You're good. Appreciate that. Tanya, is this a potential site for an admin building?
Oh, there you go. I didn't think of that one.
Where's the MAC? Where's the MAC going to be?
Okay, really? Okay, so we would need some decisions made by January though, correct? Okay.
That would be helpful as I put out the RFP.
Very good. Thank you for this. This is helpful for me.
Thank you very much.
Tom?
Good morning, Commissioners and all. This is Kelly Dixon, Metropolitan Area Building and Construction. I am your Cedric County Floodplane Manager. I am not up here to talk about zoning today, so round of applause. So today I want to talk a little bit about some information that's come to us. We just recently had a meeting with State of Kansas and a FEMA contractor engineering firm that's been working on some map revisions within Cedric County. Now they're not just held to Cedric County. These map provisions are kind of a result of FEMA's Risk Map Initiative, which is initiative to supply better mapping throughout the entire United States. They're doing it through some revised engineering methods. I won't get into those really deep. I've got experts here that are engineers that can tell you about that if need be. But the, the whole idea is it does support the National Flood Insurance Program of which we are a member. It has both regulatory and non-regulatory products. There are products out there for small jurisdictions that can use some of this data to maybe help mitigate some of their problems that they're having with flooding. And basically we get updated floodplain maps using some new data. So that, the, the risk map is, is done pretty much on a watershed basis as, as opposed to a county or a city basis. So you can see here in the state of Kansas, the different watersheds are identified on here. And these, it kind of lists where the, the, each watershed is in the state's progression of getting this done. We were one of the first ones, Cedric County and the surrounding counties were the first, one of the first ones to, to get this done. And it started back in 2020. In 2020, they had done some base level engineering of our watershed and had identified some, some flood risk. So we, they came to us, they, they met with the communities in the area. We had a kickoff meeting in 2019 and a discovery meeting in 2020. And in those discovery meetings, they talked to us about what they had found as far as watersheds go, as far as a potential need for further studies. And we, they were studying the lower arc and the lower middle arc. We also are part of the Walnut. The east side of Wichita all pretty much drains into Butler County. So that was another meeting that was held that wasn't on this list. And just a reminder that Cedric County, we did get our most effective maps. They were adopted in 2016. So that's currently the maps we're working with. So at that, at those, when they were presenting this to us, this is what they came to us with. These were the watersheds and the streams that they felt like needed additional work. And so you can see on here, there's two sets of colors. There's a blue and a red. The blue streams are unstudied streams and the red are studied. And just a quick overview of what that means is we used to call these areas up there, the blue ones, approximate A zones, which means they had very little engineering work done to them, very little survey work. They basically used contours and ran a basic flood model to, to come up with the flood elevations. A studied area is a much more detailed review of those floodplains. They actually go out and survey the bridges and the culverts and the openings to look for, for backwater issues and make sure that we get the right amount of water draining through. And that's how they create those. So they're a much more detailed and they also show a floodway typically. A floodway is an area of increase of one foot if you start filling in the fringes. So these are the areas you can see here. Northwest Cedric County was one that we knew even in 2016, when we got the new maps, there were. that we knew even in twenty sixteen when we got the new maps, there were concerns then about the engineering that was used may not have been the best at that time. And then there's a few places down south, down around PAC and part of the tributaries to the cow scan down there. And then of course, the east side of Wichita over there. And that is part of the Scott, hit me up. I just went blank. What's that drainage? Four Mile Creek. Thank you. Just just went totally blank. So we're going to look a little bit closer at these. I discussed the the zone AE with the floodway. This is the Four Mile Creek drainage area. You can see the the streams that they went into greater detail on. Then up northwest around Bentley and Mount Hope. Again, these were zone As. One of the the new methods they used was two D modeling as opposed to one D, which is what we've always used in the past. Again, that doesn't mean a whole lot to me. It means a lot to Scott. Because the computer model that they run and how they run it to get better information. And you can see again down south along the cow scan. So the state of Kansas and the contractor who is basically a cooperating technical partner, the state of Kansas is basically a go between between FEMA and us. And they have hired an engineering firm that does these this work. They've come up with a map. And we've seen this before. If you were around for the last map revisions, a couple of years ahead, we got some maps that showed some changes that were coming and it did it by color. So green is an area that's in the floodplain, but it's going to be coming out based on the new maps. Yellow is floodplain today and it's going to stay. Red, it's you're not so lucky if you're in the red. That's areas of increase. That's where that's new floodplain. But I want to show you now, and and again, today's just kind of an informational, you know, what's coming. This is still a ways out. This is a twenty twenty six map change. So this is the Bentley area in the city of Bentley. And one of the reasons we're having this discussion today because they they saw these maps just last week as well, and they're pretty, pretty excited about it. The city of Bentley, as you can see, a good portion of the town is is going into the floodplain. I believe there's some seventy four structures that are going to be included in the floodplain now that weren't there. You can also see a lot of green that's coming out. So this this engineering has has using twenty eighteen light our data, they've been able to take some large areas out as well. This is Mays. If you look at the city of Mays, we'll step over for a second.
I believe this is the new pipeline right there.
To give you an idea of about where this is, all along K ninety six on the south side.
Can you show us where Mays Road is on that map? Pete, pay attention. Okay. Okay.
So you can see a fair chunks of that's going in. And there's already been some work done up there by a local engineering firm that they think is going to take care of the floodplain at least for the the new plants going in and they're looking at offset for some of the other. So just just because it's in a floodplain doesn't mean it's not usable, doesn't mean it's not buildable, just means they have to do other things. They have to have offset someplace for the water to go, compensatory storage. You know, if you take an acre of dirt out or add an acre of dirt over here, you got to take an acre of dirt out to give that water someplace to go. So there may not be as much land to use there, but it's still usable. This is Mount Hope. As you can see, there's quite a bit of additional flooding identified in the city of Mount Hope on the north end and up toward the highway. Also a great deal on the farmlands going south, a little bit taken out in the area. Looks like more going in. And this is the Four Mile Creek watershed. This was just kind of an overall view. It doesn't really help you a whole lot. You see a lot of different colors in there. So we'll just kind of blow it up a little bit. Now you can see the different reds and the different, some greens in there. When you get in and start blowing these up, even though a red area might look really small on this particular map, when you blow it up, it might encumber two houses in in a small area. I want to, I'll talk a little bit more about the Four Mile Creek watershed in a little bit as far as the engineering goes. Here's another area along that watershed. I asked GIS to come up. They went ahead and got with the state, got the mapping information and I asked them to pull up some numbers for me. You can see, these are areas where there are nine one one address structures. So it may be a barn, but most likely a house that are going to be in those red zones. You can see Bentley has seventy eight structures. Unincorporated Cedric County has sixty seven, Wichita has thirteen, Mays eight, Mount Hope has eight. And then they were, they were broke it down even further by zip code and then by commission districts. Commissioner Dennis, you you win with a hundred and forty nine. So just congratulations. They also drew up a little map for us, kind of pinpointed the places where these structures are. So you can see the heaviest courses up northwest with a fair amount over in the east part of Wichita. Now this map, this web map is available for anyone to look at, the public, any of us, it's been, it's been put out there. You you go to it through this website, you'll get this map and then you can go in and type in an address. And it'll pull up that address with the same red, green and yellow. You can pull up baseline elevations, things like that. But for most people, that's not really important right now. Because our maps are not going to change until these are put into map form and adopted. I'm sorry?
She said and adopted.
Yeah, you do. You have to adopt them. Once once FEMA puts them out and we'll go through the steps here in just a moment. But finally, you'll have to adopt the maps. So the next steps after what's happened now, what we know. And we are way out of the norm in this particular process. Typically, we don't see what we've seen here until the preliminary maps come out. That's always the way it's been. Preliminary maps come out, they show them to us, we got ninety days to appeal them. Then they start going through the formal adoption process. In this particular case, they've given them to us way ahead so that we can look at them, get public input. Not not wait for where we're compressed into that ninety day appeals period and start getting additional information. So right now we have them and they've asked for our review and comments by several, excuse me, September twelfth. And then we do plan to have some open houses between sometime between November and January, the end of this year. They're talking probably doing two, one in maybe east Wichita and one in maybe northwest Cedric County. Those are the obvious places to have those. They intend to have preliminary maps around March of twenty twenty five. Then there'll be an appeals period. Of course, that date depends on the publication of those preliminaries in the federal register. So sometime between May and January, we'll have a ninety day appeals period. It's very finite timeframes. Not keep in mind, it took us, we started our last mapping project in two thousand eight. We got them in two thousand sixteen. So yeah. Government moves quick. We should get it as the estimated time for a letter of final determinations, March twenty twenty six with an effective date of the new maps of twenty or September twenty twenty six. So we're good two years out through this process. So what are we doing now that we have this information? And I can tell you a lot. Right now Cedric County Public Works is reviewing the changes that were provided by FEMA and giving them updated information. You know, one of the things in our meeting the other day, Scott says, well, we're fixing to change some culverts up by Mount Hope, I believe it was, and that's going to change that drainage area and that's going to change that floodplain. And so that's the kind of thing that they're doing. I found out today too that that Scott's been working with some local engineering firms. And we have been able to obtain a bunch of data on survey points that show that maybe some of the east side light our data may not have been as accurate as they hoped. And so that information's being forwarded to FEMA or to the state. But so that that can be incorporated into the maps. And so what we're looking at today may change in some areas along the way. That's the whole idea of getting it early is so that we can we can give that kind of input. And what he found today was was pretty impressive. They did some survey work after the last maps or the light art came out in twenty eighteen. And we they believe there may be some some areas where the lidar is higher than the actual ground elevations, which would lower those floodplains. M A B C D, we're going to use this new information in guiding development in areas of increased BFE to ensure that people stay out of the floodplain or at least are protected. So what we're going to be doing there, these are not official maps, so we can't regulate to them at this point. But what we do know is in a lot of those cases, if it's going to be in the floodplain, then I don't want a citizen to go out and build his house slab on grade in an area that I know in two years is going to be in the floodplain and he's going to be a foot low. So we will be looking at these maps when we do these these permitting processes and advising them that they need to build up and why. Can't make them, but we can certainly advise them to build up and build safe. We will also be sending out the notices to the negatively affected properties. When we, once we get the information on the public meetings, the open houses, we will send out a letter to all those affected properties stating, you know, here's access to the maps. Here's the open houses. You really need to go. And it's going to have my phone number on there and it's going to really recommend that they call. Because we did this in twenty sixteen, we got very small response to it. And then after the maps went effective and everybody started getting letters from their bank saying they had to get flood insurance, then my phone started ringing. Where a lot of people could have gotten out of the floodplain prior to the change. Once the change was made, then they could not. So that's what's going on at the staff level with with this new information that's come out. And I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, I'm sure there's a few, Commissioner Mike.
Kelly, you said just your last sentences, they could have done something before the final map. What's an example of what they could have done to get out of the floodplain?
So if, when when a map goes effective and and the floodplain is established, the only way to get out of the floodplain is by a letter of map amendment. A letter of map amendment means that existing conditions are there and they are higher than the the floodplain. For example, you have a house that was, if they, if they surveyed it before the map went effective and they found that it was going to be a little low, they could go in and put dirt around that house. So that when the map went effective, that was existing conditions and they could survey that and that house could be taken out of the floodplain. If they did not do that before the map change and they had a basement with a window well, the bottom of the window well becomes the lowest adjacent grade and they can't get it taken out. The only way they could take it out is to seal off that window and fill that up. So we did have people do that. I had a gentleman up Bentley Farms up by Bentley actually built a retaining wall from wing wall to wing wall across the back of his property and put two and a half the back of his house and he put two and a half feet of dirt in there. So when it came time, the maps went effective, he had a surveyor come out, they shot the lowest adjacent grade, two and a half feet higher now and got his house taken out.
Well, Kelly, Scott, Glenn, you guys got some work to do here. I appreciate the update. I've been forewarned by Lynn that this was coming. It hurts my small cities very badly. Especially Bentley. I I'm really concerned about that city because they're already experiencing a lot of problems from a developer that came in and sold them Villa Goods and now their their property tax is extremely high because they're having to pay off all those bonds that that they floated to put all that infrastructure in. This is going to hurt them even more. Have we, another area, you said that Charlotte Pipe is in this area. Are we talking to Charlotte Pipe now to let them know as they build that plant so that they don't have to worry about the the flood insurance?
They're doing dirt work now, so.
Their engineer was actually at our meeting the other day when we met with the state and and they were she felt pretty confident they were in good shape, but they're, they are working with the company.
Okay. And we do have some folks that work stormwater. Are they looking at each one of these areas now, as you mentioned, changing some culverts and so forth so that we can adjust that now?
Yes. I'm I'm working, I'm going to be preparing comments to KDA before September twelfth next month to notify them of some culverts on two seventy ninth Street West that where we're going to be switching out. And it should be improving the drainage through there just south of Mount Hope. And there'll be some other areas that we'll be looking at as well.
Good. Well, as the chart showed, District Three is extremely affected by this. It goes back a number of years. Commissioner Howell and I were the only two that were here at that time, but we did get a briefing out of NCAT some years ago that looked what a small sales tax, and I know we're talking about sales tax for other things, but what a small sales tax could do for stormwater management. The problem is we've got, last time I heard, like a billion dollars or something like that and different plans that we could have for our stormwater management, where we have absolutely no funding mechanism to work any of those. It's a concern because we even had a storm management committee at one time and we've kind of disbanded them because we don't have any money to fix any of the different issues that are involved in stormwater. But it's something that we probably ought to regenerate. I don't know if we need that committee because we already know what the issues are. We know where the problems are. We we just need a funding mechanism in order to start working those. I think it's kind of incumbent upon this commission to start looking at the future and what we need to do to start mitigating some of these stormwater problems that we've got out there. We can't just say, well, it's a big problem. We can't fix it. So let's just forget about it because I guarantee it's going to rain again. Might not in the near future, but it's going to rain again. And as soon as we do, we're going to be criticized because we've done nothing. Now is the time to do something when it's not raining so that we can fix the problem. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I appreciate the previous comments here. I would just say that that we call that Board of the SPAB Storm, Storm Water Management Advisory Board, I think is what it was called. And there was a lot of frustration. They did a lot of good work. And the idea, the idea of that board was if there was revenue stream, he would, I think the county was interested in potentially grading different stormwater projects. We would partner with cities and we would match some funding to incentivize some of these repairs to get people out of the floodplain and to make some more property, more develop, developable, if you will. But I think Johnson County has had this since nineteen eighties, I believe. I believe it's a quarter cent sales tax. And of course, that sales tax here would be thirty five million dollars. And I can imagine thirty five million dollars on the table for this type of, you know, especially. And it was tenth of a cent, tenth of a cent. But then again, in Johnson County, so who knows how much money that creates? It's millions of dollars it creates and we do, we do some stream maintenance here. They don't do that. That's private sector issue in Johnson County, but they do infrastructure with that tenth of a cent. And again, as many millions of dollars, I think I think the idea is we would leverage cities' interests in getting things fixed. Some things we would be solely in the unincorporated, we would fund those projects as well. And if we had a sales tax, we would also, I think, fund our work on the Mitch McConnell, Mitch Mitchell floodway would be also funded through that sales tax potentially. So it is an interesting idea. Right now, we we use property taxes. Floodway would be also funded through that sales tax potentially. So it is an interesting idea. Right now, we, we use property taxes for that. But because we, we talk about things that don't seem to act on ideas. This idea just died and people are frustrated because these are good ideas, but we can't move any, can't move forward. To Commissioner Dennis's point, you know, when it, we have, we're in a drought right now. This is a great time to. enlarge the capacity of Cheney, for example, but no one's doing that right now. When it's flooding, it's the wrong time to deal with flooding. We don't deal flooding when it's dry. And deal with water resources when it's dry. And then when it's, when the floods come, we don't have to worry about it because we took, we planned ahead. Like Noah in the ark type of thing, right? But we don't seem to deal with these issues when it's dry. We probably should. Couple of other comments. How many houses, how many structures are being taken out of the floodplain with this change? We have those numbers?
I did not run those numbers. No, sir.
Matt, we get to see that dating. I think generally speaking, this might be. Good news for lots of folks. I'd like to know how many people are going to, you know, celebrate the, the good news.
Yeah, at a, at a glance, I don't think there were that many.
Okay.
Being taken out, a lot of what was taken out was just vacant farmland.
So if there's no change, I assume they will not get a letter from us. But if there is a change either direction, they'll get a notification letter.
We typically just send them out to those that are being negatively risked.
Well, if they're paying for flood insurance, I'd like to let them know that they don't have to do that. That that would be a notification that we'd want to hear that.
Okay.
So that needs to be done. Second of all, if, if these maps are beginning to become public right now, and we don't plan on adopting this for a couple of years. These 174 structures, if I owned any one of those, I'd be like saying, sell now because. Buyer beware that I don't have to disclose that to the future person that they may be putting into a floodplain. I think there's going to be a lot of shenanigans, perhaps people are going to say. Sell that property immediately because it's got, it's going to, it's going to be devalued in two years when this, when this passes. Why wouldn't they just jump the gun, so to speak, and say, I see what's coming. I'm going to sell that property and they're going to take the loss, not me. By doing this, this way, we're creating, we're creating an opportunity.
Well, it, we had the same opportunities on any previous map updates. Because the time, the pre, from the preliminary to the actual adoption is usually at least a year. And so they've had that, we had those opportunities before and really didn't see anything happen until after the maps changed.
Go, can someone look at this map right now and see their, so if that is red part, if the red stuff on the map touches their. Structure, they would be likely to be on that one of those 174. So people could look at that right now and figure that out pretty easily.
Yeah, they can type in their address and it'll take them right to their house.
So I'll tell you, back in 19, I'm sorry, yeah, back in 2016. I believe the genesis of that change was, that was long overdue. We had better technology. I think it was LiDAR technology. They said six.
It was.
Six inch increments for topographical maps at that time. And we, we updated maps across the county. It was significant, much more significant than this one, actually.
Yes.
I, it's news to me that that technology wasn't. Wasn't good enough. I don't know why it's changing again. You're taking, they're doing these, these tributaries or whatever, that type of. Look at this, but aren't those, aren't those six inch increments still relevant?
I will just note on top. Technology is only as good as the people who are using it. Yes, the technology used is much better than was used before, prior. We need to vet this issue out on the east side a little bit more, but it does appear to be some type of a error occurred. With the LiDAR, if, if we, what happens, it pans out to be what we think it is. And you need to be able to survey and have hard, we call hard shots to be able to. Set your points and establish your, your LiDAR. And if that's not done right, then that throws everything off. So there is a potential that that occurred back then and we're just trying to vet that out and see. Number one, we know one area where it may have happened. Did it happen in others? Did it happen countywide? That still needs to be vetted out.
Well, something else happened in 2016. We had a two, 100 year, two 100 year floods and a 500 year flood that came into Sedgwick County. We also had the 1998 Halloween flood. We've had, we've had some flood, you know, history here and they're not to recent future. Based on these homes, if they've not flooded and they were existing at those times. If they want to argue back and say, I don't agree with your science, but. I don't think you're, you're, you're putting me into a floodplain. Well, I actually going to tell you, we've not had a problem. Is this something that's discretionary?
No. No, it's really not. You know, FEMA has it set up. So if you can prove. That your property is not in that 1% annual chance risk. Then you can have it removed and you just typically just by elevation. Or in the case of like the Brewer Community Center, you guys were all familiar with that. They tried to build that a year ago. And realized it was in the floodplain here in Wichita. And it's taken us a year to get that to the position where it's out. That was done by a map revision. Where we realized that since the city had taken a bridge out over the, the ditch or the canal. That water levels actually were going to be lowered, but no one had ever done that, that engineering study to show that. By doing that, the water levels came down a couple of feet and we were able to take the Brewer Center out of the floodplain along with a bunch of other houses. That's the only way you can do a discretion, you know, the only way you can get something taken out. To argue that it's never flooded before is, is not an argument. And not every place in 1998 or 2012 or 2008, not every place received those kinds of rainfalls. The 1998 flood affected South Wichita and I believe some of West Wichita, but didn't affect Northeast Wichita. The 2008, was it 2008 21st Street where we had a 1500 year event? I got an inch and a half at my house down south. And they got almost 15 inches up north. So, you know, it's. Relevant to where that rainfall occurs as to whether or not they were actually have seen one of those flood events or not.
When you use the word structure, is this, could, could this be anything besides? A residential living space? Could this be a attached garage or detached garage or out, an outbuilding of some sort?
So when, when Jack did that up for me, he just went for the 911 addressed structure. So he's pulling off typically the primary structure on those properties. There could be other structures affected, but it's the primary structure that we look at when it comes to flood insurance requirements.
All right. Thank you for, thank you for your answers.
One last question I should have asked before. The Halloween flood in 98, of course, I'm very interested in that because it, my house was an island there for a few days. But all my neighbors were flooded. This new flood plan maps, do they impact any of those areas that flooded in the, in the Halloween flood? Or the flood that followed a year later?
No, sir, I don't believe so.
But nothing went in and nothing went out.
Those, those were all handled in the 2007, 2012 and 2016 maps. All the, all the updates along the cow's skin and stuff were picked up in those different series of maps that we've gone through.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, two quick questions. One, do we, we obviously have some information about what's coming. Or at least a good idea of what's coming. Justin, do we have any? Do we have any sort of responsibility to. Communicate this? If I'm a banker, if I'm a developer, if I'm a, I would want to know that we know.
Yeah, I just try to understand. I don't believe there's a legal responsibility in the county, but I think what, some of what Kelly described in his presentation is that traditionally the county has, and I'd look to Lynn, I think you may also.
I'm just asking legally, are we required to do anything? And is there a timeline when we do have to do something?
I'm not aware of one off the top of my head, Chairman.
I will tell you that part of this process, which Kelly noted that here, probably in end of the year, beginning of the year, we're going to have those open houses. Part of that effort will be countywide notification to everybody that these maps are out there.
There, there, I have been lawsuits in real estate from people that have bought properties and it wasn't disclosed what they were buying, that. There was some known knowledge prior. So I'm just trying to make sure that we're doing everything, not, maybe not even from a liability standpoint, but we're doing what's right by people. Yeah, to make sure that they understand.
Until the maps are adopted. We have no responsibility.
Okay.
Until they're, until, yes, until they're adopted. We are trying to help prevent future problems by letting people know now so that if it's something they can do. I know that Scott has, we have a new plat that just, just being worked on right now and it's on one of those tributaries over there. On Four Mile Creek. And I saw the email that went out and said, hey, stop.
Well, I didn't know, maybe through planning and.
You need to, yeah, you need to look at these, these new numbers and make sure that.
Last question. And I appreciate all of this is good information. Give us qual, give me the qualify for taxpayers and for property owners. If they find themselves into a new floodplain, qualify that. What, what is the impact to them? Just buying flood insurance?
So, yeah. So if you have a federally backed loan, your house structure, your, your primary structure goes into floodplain, then you are required to have flood insurance. The, it's not really you, it's your bank. The federal government holds that over the banks that say, you know. We are backing your loans. You need to make sure that everything that's in a floodplain is protected.
Okay, that's only really the only requirement that people should be able to make aware of at this point. Very good. Any other questions? This is interesting.
If I could, Commissioner, I did want to point out that, you know, Commissioner Howell brought it up as far as. Green, what we'll call in the green areas is green, yellow and a yellow hatched area. The yellow hatched area all over the map. For your information is where nothing's changed. It's just, is as it was before. There's. Most of the map is the yellow. The red is where it's added in additional areas. What you will note or what I noted when I did a scan around the county was there is very little green area. They come in little slivers and that's, and that's overall. Expected in Sedgwick County because we've known about problems for the last. Or 30, 40 years and we haven't had the funds to take care of them. We haven't taken any action. So you're not going to see a lot of green area because we haven't done any of that. And I also want to point out that. It's very difficult to tackle the, you've all noted, this is the time to do it. We're in a drought. This is the time to start, you know, to tackle these types of problems, not when you're in a flood or in a flooding season. But we look at the big ditch and, you know. Nobody questions now the value that has brought and all of the land that has been removed from the floodplain. Because of that work that went on. I had the honor of working with Mitch Mitchell. And I remember him telling stories of him getting run off land with shotguns because. No way, no, that was not going to go through their property and. You know, now I think their descendants would come down and say, yep, that's been a benefit to everyone in the area. But it took the commission and council back then to have the foresight to recognize what those improvements were going to bring in the future. Not right away, but in the future. And that's what's really being faced right now. We're not going to see a lot of green. We're not going to see regression of the floodplanes until we take active action. More than we are funded to do right now to, to do, to make those go away.
Okay, that's good.
Just to add on to that, you know, he's talking about the big ditch and what it protects. It protects basically everything from Hillside to Hoover, 37th North to 31st Street South. If you look at, if you look at our maps, those are the areas that would be in a floodplain today.
What percentage of Central County is that?
Well, it's most of Wichita. Yeah. So just FYI, I mean, the, the, the big ditch does make a huge difference on the flooding in Wichita. So, thank you all.
Kelly, real quick, you mentioned that people that have a loan that's federally backed. What about people that have paid off their house? How, how are we notifying all those folks?
We will notify them as well. I mean, anybody that's in the red area is going to get a notice. This is, you know, you're, it's changing. You need to take a look at this. You're, it's kind of basically say your property may be negatively affected by these new maps. You need to go to this website or call this number.
And what else, based on a thousand dollars worth of house or how, how do they figure?
There's a, for flood insurance, it's a pretty complicated. Method now under their new. New methods, but I mean, the average house in Sedgwick County flood insurance is, is $1,138 a year. And we have 184 policies in unincorporated Sedgwick County, right?
It's not cheap. Okay, thank you, Kelly, Scott, Lynn. Thank you so much for all the work in this. I'm sure we'll be talking a lot here in the next few months. Tom, anything else?
Yeah, one more thing. Some of you have gotten notification from KAC that they're formulating their state legislative platform. So Tanya has, we, we had talked to just a couple of days ago. About what we could add to the KAC platform and I want to have Tanya go over that with you and make sure we have agreement. Or if there's more you want to add, let's have that discussion now.
Okay, so as Tom mentioned, KAC put out. Their request for their legislative policy statement, asking for policy requests. So. What I did was I looked at our running list that we have for our 2025 legislative platform and tried to identify what I felt would. Be effective to all of the 105 counties. So what I came up with was, and Commissioner Howell, I may need to lean on you a little bit on a couple of these. Was the Auto License Fund, Election Precinct and the B O C C binding contracts. I think Auto License Fund, you, we have talked about that several times in commission staff meetings. The Election Precinct and the B O C C binding contracts, I have what Justin sent me, which is kind of the legal language. I'm happy to go over that or Commissioner Howell, I don't know if you want to speak to both of those.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, one of these gets to the issue of when there are small precincts that have. Only a few registered voters. And the reason that this happens is actually very technical. But when there is a precinct with less than 20 electors or less than 20 people vote in a precinct. Those results from that precinct are redacted in the results. So no one can see exactly what the voting totals were for that precinct is not added to them. So what that means is like an election like we just had, I actually think that back, let's go back to 20, 2022, the general election. There was about, I believe, 82 or 83 precincts that were redacted in Sedgwick County. Of those, there were just under 500 votes total. Now, in the, in an era where people are very skeptical of election integrity and security. To sit there and have numbers that don't add up is concerning. And so I, I, what I like to say is it seems to me that there ought to be a way for us to. Deal with that issue and the, 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 really the issue is, let's say you're in Wichita, you have a Wichita precinct. And there's a county road goes down along the city of Wichita. Boundary and then across the road, there's another Wichita area. Other words, the city's expanded, but the road between the two. Areas that calls Wichita their home is a county property. Well, that forces it to be two precincts and this happens all over the place. So the idea is that we would want a law that says if they, if a, if something is, if, if. It's what causing this small precinct to be created is a geographic boundary, things like a county road, for example. That the Secretary of State would allow the Election Commissioner to combine those precincts. So that it does have that small precinct effect, if you will. And that is a fairly simple thing to do. I, I, right, right now. This is not anyone, it's not on anybody's radar, but I do think that from one, I spent a lot of time looking at election. I look at a lot of election data and this has been a frustration of mine for quite a while now. And I think for anybody who understands, if I, if I told the public, there's 500 votes out there, we don't know where they came from. We have no idea. That would be very, very bothersome. There's a lot of races that are decided by much, much smaller numbers than that. And then. I would like it if there was a limitation so that if, let's say that anybody from the rural offices, the treasurer. The register of deeds, the county clerk, the sheriff, the DA. Or anybody else that's elected that represent, is represented by Sedgwick County government. That they would not be allowed to enter into a legal binding agreement, especially as financial obligations without. The B O C C voting to adopt or to approve that contract. And I bring that up because this has happened. So to me, it just seems like since we have to. We, we carry the purse, so to speak, we ought to be at least consulted or part of any decision that obligates financially. The, the county to pay any type of payment out to satisfy a contract that we've entered into as a county. satisfy a contract that we've entered into as a county.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, if you remember, uh, during other, here, about a month ago, I brought up the fact that, uh, Butler County has the next, uh, head of the KAC and that they were looking at different things, uh, to put on the legislative agenda. So this is not a surprise. Uh, a couple of things, I, I agree that, uh, the tag office, we need to have that on there. Also, they brought up, but Butler County Fire Department is now required to have additional, um, uh, physicals each year, which, uh, costs, uh, the county a lot of money. So I don't know, and I talked to Tanya before the meeting, so she's aware of this. Uh, we need to talk to the fire chief and see if there's something that is in that, that we need to, to include so that, uh, we don't have to pick up all the additional funding for the, uh, physicals for the fire, uh, or all of our firefighters and we protect them. Uh, a question for Commissioner Howe. I, I know you've mentioned a couple of times, uh, that the federal, state government ought to help fund the election office. Uh, do we need to include something like that? And I leave it to you because you're the one that's the expert on elections.
So, again, I would think absolutely. And I, um, just for a reminder, there's four large counties in the state that hit the hundred and thirty person threshold that, that, that are, have appointments by the state of Kansas. Again, it's a frustration, both, again, I would argue the appraisers office is very similar to this. I, I, I actually like to to, uh, change the title to clarify, these are state appointments. They are state employees. We don't have any discretion over their offices. And because of that, I think the state should take ownership and at least funding a large portion of that office, at least what they consider to be, maybe baseline funding. They should say for whatever, whatever the population is, they would provide funding from the state to, uh, run the office at least to some level. And if we want to go further than that, we'd have local control, but I think, um, one reason our property taxes are so high is because we have mandates from the state of Kansas to run their offices, sixteen of them total. And this, these are the two I think are the, the easiest ones to talk about are the state appraisers office, we call it Sedgwick County Appraiser, but he's or Swiss state and the county election commissioner, which is appointed by the state. So in both cases, either offices, we have no ability to control spending at all. And what they do is completely outside of our paradigm to have any say on it. So I would like to see a, a, a law that would, uh, advocate for the state to take over these two offices financially.
How specific do you need to be on that tag office thing? We've talked about a couple of different approaches. One is giving the treasurer the opportunity to have some flexibility in fees. She can adjust fees herself. The other one was just getting a fee increase from the state. I mean, how specific do you need at this point in time?
No, I don't think I have to be too specific. It's really just asking about what the issue is. Um, so I think if I can define that, I think that's.
Okay, good. Not, thank you. Good thing.
Uh, on the auto license issue, we had three proposals and I'll, any one of those three would work. I actually articulated that in the email to the to staff here. I don't think we'll talk about that now, but there are at least three ways to solve that problem.
Yeah, as long as she doesn't need the specifics now that we're just, know that we're going to try to tackle this. I think we can develop those and vet those things out as we go.
Well, and can I add, I guess, um, after, we, we had a conversation with Brandy this morning. And one of the things that we talked about at the end of that meeting, um, just she and I was the idea of having our language and our platform match whatever her treasures association language is going to be so that we're all working toward the same goal. So I don't know if it's going to be one of those three options that have been articulated, if it's something else, but if you don't mind, I'd like to reach out to her and get that language and get it to Tanya. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Tanya.
Hey, thank you, Lucy. Are you okay with, so I'm hearing the three, um, topics that I brought up and then possibly two others, which was the fire department physicals. And then do we want to also put in the election, funding the election office and the appraisers office?
I, I think the latter of the two, I think is important, certainly the election and appraisers. I think we might need to get some more information about on the fire, what what really is being asked and what she thinks about this and.
Well, there are only four counties in the state that have election commissioners. So I don't know if this is really, if that particular component is a KAC component since they advocate on behalf of a hundred and five counties. I think appraisers certainly. Um, but I don't know if that would be something to talk about and bet out more with KAC about whether they'd be interested.
About fifty percent of the state's population is in those four counties, however.
Chairman, I was going to make a comment and I'm on the KAC board. I think, I think one thing that's worth noting is the typical process, when we get really specific on items with that, I'm not saying we can't, uh, as the county, um, they will then take those specific items and lump them into the much more broad terms that they have. That doesn't mean that the board, in my opinion, shouldn't consider the more specific items. I think they have something on their platform to the effect of, um, uh, essentially mandates from the state that are not funded, making sure the state funds those. Some of these may fit into existing items on their platform. Um, and I don't know, Tanya, do you have, did they send you a, a draft of the platform from last year? That's kind of off to the starting point.
I don't know if it's on there.
If not, we can get you a copy of that. But I'm just saying for Tanya's work, it may help her to frame those because ultimately that's part of the exercise traditionally is they'll take items and kind of slot them into uh, existing more general categories they already have. Uh, but I do think it probably helps them to have ideas um, in terms of supporting or opposing bills that come forward in Topeka.
A couple of things I might add on this as well, that the deadline is due tomorrow by end of business. And the only other thing is they say that they prefer that a prior discussion happens on these issues with the Kansas legislature. Again, that's preferred, so. Doesn't mean I'm not going to submit it without.
Sure.
Back to Tanya's comment, uh, or not Tanya, uh, Lindsey's comment about, uh, the election commissioner. All hundred and five counties, uh, do elections and just that it's run by the, the county clerk rather than the election commissioner. Uh, so every one of them experiences, uh, funding issues to, to be able to run their election. So I do think it belongs, uh, for a hundred and five counties.
Mr. Howe.
Just, um, throw this out there, the legislative, South Central Legislative Delegation is supposed to meet with REAP on September twenty-sixth at nine thirty AM. I do plan to attend that. But that might be an opportunity for us to get some of those folks to, um, you talked about legislative uh, support type of thing. There might be a way to float some of these ideas there if they're, if they're willing to let that happen. Um, there are two, I'm, I'm a little bit frustrated with KAC. Um, they have locked arms with the League of Kansas Municipalities, LKM. Uh, LKM typically represents cities. There's about five hundred and fifty incorporated cities inside the state of Kansas. We have a hundred and five counties. And I know they think they're stronger together, but sometimes the subject matter is conflicting. And there's two things we've had on our platform in the past. We've not talked about these in a long time. But it's like, almost like, it's almost like the KAC forgot about them. And I don't know if we want to remind them or not. One of these deals, I think Kansas is the only state in the country that allows for unilateral annexation. I've said he used to gobble up county property. And one of the challenges there, of course, is that people who live in the county don't have representation in those decisions. It's, it's, it violates a constitutional idea, so to speak. So that's what we've talked about in the, in the past. I don't know why we're, right, to me, if, if KAC is asking about a county's position, I would say to our constituents in the unincorporated, they need to have representation constitutionally. We should ask for some type of consideration to, to give them the voice in those decisions. Of unilateral, again, right now should not be considered unilateral annexation. I think we're the only state in the country that does that. And I have a second one. I see Justin wants to say something. Go ahead.
Yeah, Commissioner Howe, I, I think, and that's a, that's a good point. And I, I think I would just share with you that I, I think there are county commissioners from other counties that have expressed similar concerns to what you just indicated, uh, that are involved with KAC. So I think that is a, an important point to note. And that's, that's something where the county, presumably the KAC may not lock arms with the League of Municipality just because of some, uh, different interests there. But I think that's a, uh, there have been examples, I've heard other counties mention where this has been a concern for them and for, um, you know, their counties. So I think it's a good point.
So it is something I think it belongs in this discussion and I would advocate personally as a commissioner that this is something I would like to see us advocate for. The KAC, the second one of these, of course, is constitutional home rule. Cities have constitutional home rule. We have statutory home rule. But we, we find all kinds of limits to what that means. And I know we have, um, urban county designation, but that's not enough. I think at the end of the day, we ought to have the ability to, to run our affairs here in the county. And, and right now, uh, that's an issue that I think needs to be on a platform somewhere. So I would ask, and since they're asking to put that on their list as constitutional home rule for six, for, uh, for counties.
And Commissioner Howe, again, I, I just would add, I think that one actually is specifically on there. I think that's a specific, I think it's towards the top of their platform, if I remember correctly. So I think constitutional home rule is something they've long been, uh, trying to get.
Okay, very good. Good discussion. Tanya? We good?
I believe so. I'll do some research on a couple of these things and, and then I'll look back to you to make sure, um, I have everything put together before I submit.
Very good. Yeah, thank you.
Much.
Tom, we good?
Yeah.
Okay, tomorrow, big day. So, um, my club. See you tomorrow, nine AM.